The legislature is back in session. Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Munia Barnes?
Oh. Sorry, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when we left, I just want to thank my colleagues for the points that they raised in reference to the Bill 75-32 as amended. And if we can, just at this time, because I'm just trying to make some copies based on the bill that we will further substitute on the floor, if we can just set this aside, work on another bill, and then come back to me once the copies are made. And then hopefully this will answer all the concerns from my colleagues.
Okay. So, that's -- no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
So, we would now go back to a bill that has been set aside and the author is ready. So, I'd like to then call everyone's attention to Bill 146-32. Senator Tony Hadda, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I appreciate the body's patience in working with me and making some amendments to Bill 146, addressing their concerns that they had with the bill. And I have several amendments that I'd like to proffer. And the amendments have already been passed out. The first amendment, which is mark number one on the upper right corner, is to change habitable property to business. And that will be on page two, lines 15, 17, and 26. And then, again, on line -- page three, line nine.
So, let's take this one at a time, then. So, on page two...
Lines 15, 17, and 26.
Okay. So, what it is, is that every place in which habitable property is to change that, delete that, and add business.
Right.
And that's on lines 15, 17, and 26. As for that page, is everybody on board with that?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
And then...
So, that's on page two. Wait one second. And then, of course, you're saying even for page three, wherever it talks about...
Right. Page three, line nine.
Okay. So, on that amendment, then, I have to speak... Page two is lines 15, 17, 26. Then, page three, we have line nine. And then, on page four, line two.
Line two.
Okay. So, on the amendment, and I have Speaker Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I appreciate the author's proposed amendment here. But again, you know, it's -- I just -- I've never heard the term "a man's business is his castle." I always thought "a man's home is his castle." But now, we're going to say that so is the business. You know, the business is a public place that a person kind of holds open to the general public for the virtue, I mean, in order to conduct activity. So, almost everybody that's there has a right to be there because it's open for business. And if you don't want to be there, or the business doesn't want you to be there, they can tell you to leave. You know, they have that right and that privilege. And so, I'm just a little, again, a little leery. I can almost get behind, you know, "a man's home is his castle." Okay. I just think that, you know, expanding that, which is really what the debate had centered around, and it continues to broaden, I guess, for those who proposed this. And I just think that, again, you know, maybe for consideration and continued discussion and examination as we go through this bill, you know, how do we kind of take the things that we have today, which has never presented a problem for people being prosecuted for defending themselves in their own home, that I can recall? How do we get the current legal structure that we have in place that has not created the things that we're trying to solve with this bill that doesn't exist, to kind of move that now into the home rather than making it into the entire community? And so, strengthen the individual property owner's right to defend himself and his family in their own home and kind of shelter them from, you know, liability and so forth. But now, we're kind of -- we're expanding what we have with regards to how you can defend yourself and what for by, you know, expanding this habitable property. So, I do thank the author. I think that he has continued to listen to the debate and continued to examine the issues related to those concerns raised. And he's making, you know, the presentation to this body to see if we could all try and reach and come as close to a consensus as we can. But for me, again, I get up and just reiterate, you know, that we started out with "a man's home is his castle," and now it's "and his house," and it was "and his car" also in early beginning. But I'm not sure if that has changed, or do we still continue to make that the case? So, thank you, and I just wanted to articulate those thoughts.
You're welcome, Speaker Pangolinan. On the amendment, Senator McCready.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I thank the author of this amendment and the proffer. You know, he's a businessman. He understands. He owns a business. And there's some people in here that own a business. So, when, you know, when you -- and part of this process is common sense and compromise. And I see the compromise in these amendments that he's going to proffer throughout the A man's castle is his castle because of his business. You don't get a castle if you don't have a successful business, or whatever you do when you're working to sustain that castle and that family. And when we're talking about, and I'm going to talk about, again, the situation, the most recent situation, when a business, a small business, a mom-and-pop business that was violated by this exact law that we're trying to stop the violations. The level -- the playing field is not level. You can walk into any business right now with a gun, hold up the cash register, who at most times, this cash register is a family member, or a daughter of the business owner, or a wife of the business owner, or the husband of the business owner, or a child. Now, when this guy comes in, fires off his gun, and takes all the money that that business has for education, for that castle that we're talking about, for a livelihood, then the author of this amendment is absolutely right. How do you have a castle when you don't have a business? You don't. You cannot. So, I think the way we level this playing field, and like I said yesterday, these criminals, they violate because they think they're not going to get caught. This helps level the playing field now. This helps a mom-and-pop organization with a cash register to say, "Well, if you're going to rob me, and if you're going to take away my livelihood, which may be not a castle, which may be a business, but this business supports my castle, well, then this law is going to help me." Is it the silver bullet that's going to end crime? No, absolutely not. But it's our jobs to protect the people of this community. And, you know, maybe some people in this body don't agree with the castle doctrine, or don't agree with the changing of the times, or how we should approach it. But what are we doing to protect this community? Because all you have to do is read the paper, watch the news. And this community, when it comes to crime, is getting out of hand. And they're violating us. They're violating not just the castles, but they're violating the businesses. So, I think he's the -- I commend Senator Hadda for not just listening to some of the arguments that were made yesterday, and some of the language that he's proffering to change it today, to make it more palatable for this body to accept the castle doctrine as a whole. Because in order for this bill to have teeth, it's impossible to just say, "Well, if you walk into my home, then this castle doctrine protects my rights." But what about the business? So, I think it would be an incomplete bill if the author and the proffer of these amendments didn't take into consideration other aspects of people being violated on this island, and allowing him to proffer these amendments so he could level the playing field completely. So, once again, I want to thank the author for taking the common sense approach and the compromise approach, and actually improving the bill with changing his language. So, I fully support this amendment and the rest of the amendments that he is going to proffer this afternoon. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, are there any other speakers? Anyone who'd like to speak on it? Okay. So, is there -- would you like to close on this, Senator Hadda? Or I'll just call for the vote, then.
Was there an objection on the amendment? I don't believe there was an objection.
Well, let me just clarify it for Speaker Pangolinan. That was an objection, then? Okay.
No.
So, there being then no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the second amendment is on page three, and this is to delete paragraph B, lines four through six.
Page three, lines four to six, we're going to delete that paragraph. So, that means there won't be a B, and then we'll do the renumbering?
Yes.
Okay. So, senators, then, on page three, lines four to six. Have any objections? No objections, and so ordered. Thank you, Senator. You may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the next amendment is also on page three, and it's on line 21 to 26. And this was a concern of some members of the body that thought that the -- it expanded too much. And we wanted to tighten it up and make sure that it wasn't what they read it to be. We want -- so, we just want to go ahead and delete this paragraph.
Okay. On the amendment, to delete then on page three, lines 21 to 26, which is 3A, no objections, so ordered. And can I just add, by the way, since you didn't highlight it, that on that page, line 15, the same thing for habitable property, to change that to business? So, throughout, then, where maybe we have missed?
Yes.
Can you just go ahead and make that motion, please? Just in case, as a general...
If we can just go wherever it's listed as habitable property, and if we can just go ahead and make that correction.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. So, which means then that throughout the bill, where it says habitable property, that it changes to the word business?
No, not on page four, no, because that's --
No, no.
If you're looking at page four...
No, three.
You're looking at page three.
On lines 15, you missed -- did you miss that, or that was intended to remain?
Oh, yeah. That's meant to be changed. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay. So, that then, also then, 15, on page three, and but you also had on page four, line seven...
Yes, we can just go ahead and make that correction also.
That also, okay. Then, so the same thing. And that's on line 14. So, really, if a general amendment then to do that, should take care of it?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. So, you do have another amendment again?
Yes, Madam Speaker. My fourth amendment is to change the definition of habitable property on page four, line seven. And you have the amendment there. And habitable property has the meaning provided in 3410. Habitual property as used in this article are limited to business buildings for which the victim has beneficial control and use, and residences, vehicles, and boats for which the victim has a legal right to occupy. Habitual property as used in this article does not include yards or outdoor spaces surrounding the business buildings, residence, vehicle, or boat. Nothing herein is construed to limit the right of the victim to use defensive force in a manner consistent with Chapter 7 of 9 GCA in areas outside of the home business car or boat.
Okay. So, then, let me see. Yeah. Page four, line seven, where you have now...
Yeah. So, that'll be from line seven to 12. So, we're going to delete...
You got it. So, we're going to delete...
And insert this new definition.
Delete lines 10 to 12, and add this new definition.
Yes.
Is that -- I want to make sure first that that's exactly what you want to do. One moment. Okay. To be clear again, on page four, which really starts on seven to 12, you've deleted from -- already deleted, but you want us to delete in addition habitable property all the way down to therein, and then add this new definition?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, on that amendment, Senator Hadda, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If the author would yield, I just want to make sure I'm clear about boats. Now, we're talking about vehicles, but now boats, are we talking about just houseboats, or boats that people live in, or when I'm down at the boat basin and I'm...
You can delete. You can go ahead and move and delete boats. Senator, can you please add to that question, so we can hear you?
Yes, Madam Speaker. The intent was for houseboats, but you know, if we can just go ahead and delete boats, and that way, we don't have a general definition of...
Well, no. No, I think keeping boats in there is fine, but maybe we need to be more clear that we're talking about houseboats. Because there are people who actually, that's their residence, live aboard. So, maybe we should amend that and just simply say...
Sure.
Houseboats.
Okay.
Can you say that again, Senator?
To amend where reference is made to boats...
Yes.
That really, it should be houseboats.
Okay. So, we're going to add the word "house" then before the word "boat." So, it will be "houseboats." On the other Hadda amendment, no objections, so ordered. Now, on the original -- wait, there's still -- I'm sorry?
On the amendment.
On the amendment, that's where I'm going back now, on the Tony Hadda amendment. So, Senator Serniklisi, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a question to clarify from the author on the proposed amendment, when he references the victim. I think we might need to be a little bit more clear, because the victim in -- is the victim the dead person, or the person who had to use force that killed the person? So, I think, what do we mean by victim? Perhaps we would want to clarify that.
Senator Tony Hadda, do you hear to the question?
The right of the victim to use defensive force is the person who's being perpetrated against. So, you actually become the victim, I'm the perpetrator. So, you have a right to protect yourself, and that's where that comes in, in defensive force, that's consistent with other means.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on the record that we understand victim to mean the person who had to use the force to defend their castle.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Senator.
You're welcome. All right. So, on the Tony Hadda amendment, which is a new definition now to replace what's on page four, lines seven to 12, are there any objections? No objections, and so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the fifth amendment is to add a new definition to paragraph five on page four.
Okay. So, a new definition?
And that new definition would be...
A new definition?
Yeah. It'll be "business means habitable property that is lawfully used to conduct commercial activities by duly licensed corporations, LACs, partnership, and sole proprietorships."
Okay. On the amendment, no one to speak on the amendment? Any objections to the amendment? No objections, so ordered. Okay. Senator, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And the final amendment is to add Section 7.86b2 on line five, page six, after the words of 9 GCA.
Page six, line five, a new section to add 9 GCA. On that amendment, no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Is there anything else?
That's it, Madam Speaker. That's all my amendments.
Okay. So, on the main motion now, then, Senator Serniklisi, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I really would like to commend the author for his amendments. They really helped to improve the bill, and again, it's in the spirit of us trying to get something like this passed, because I think it'll be very, very good for our community. I do have a proposed amendment on page five with regards to the immunity section. On page five, Section 2 specifies immunities, and then Section 3 requires that there be an investigation in the use of force. But if probable cause is found that the use of force was unlawful, then the person who used that force will then be arrested. But what concerns me is that we did not, in the immunity section, exempt the unlawful use of force. So, if, for example, in Section 3, if a law enforcement agency investigates the use of force, and it was in fact found to be unlawful, it technically would still be immune, because we didn't say that if it was found to be unlawful, it would no longer be immune. So, I would like to add a Section C on line 15 for Section 2 there on page five, so that one of the exceptions would be if the use of force is found to be unlawful. And I also wanted to expand it to fully read. Section C, "The use of force is found to be unlawful, or was found to have been exercised in conjunction with any illegal activity."
And you have that in writing? Because I need to make sure the clerks get it.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
But just for everyone again, I would like for you to please repeat it, which is on page five, and a new subsection C, which will be just for now, line 15 is where we want to add the new C, that if the use of force is -- I'm sorry, is -- what was the word?
Is found to be unlawful.
Found to be unlawful, or...
Or was found to have been exercised in conjunction with any illegal activity.
Okay. Exercised, okay. All right. So, are there any comments from anyone who'd like to speak on the amendment? Are you see some, maybe, would you like to see a copy of it, Speaker Pangolinan? Okay. So, why don't we take a brief recess to get a copy of it? Okay, so why don't we take a brief recess to get a copy of it? Thank you very much, Senator Siniklis, for a copy of the amendment. Speaker Pangolin, I know you had asked to see a copy, and do you have any then questions you'd like to speak on the amendment? So the amendment is, "The use of force is found to be unlawful or was found to have been exercised with any illegal activity." So, Speaker Pangolin, on the amendment? No wonder. So on page five, line fifteen to add a new subsection C.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I see the amendment and I see the proposed section that will be put into place. Once again, you know, I generally continue to like the direction of the debate and certainly the acceptance of these proposals by members of the body. But I keep kind of going back to where we at and what we're doing, given what we have in our current statutory schemes. Right now, you know, we have a law that says deadly force, when used to protect oneself, is justifiable and that, you know, you shouldn't be prosecuted for it. But even with these amendments here, what I kind of see is, we're still now saying that deadly force can be unjustifiable force, but you're immune, if it's done in your home, but you're immune from prosecution and even civil penalties. So if somehow you innocently, maybe that's the wrong word or the right word, but if somehow you, you know, exercise this unreasonable force, the standards, I think, I'm worried about that the standards forward and the exercise of this does not exist enough in what we're trying to do here in order to protect people who may be, in some form or fashion, unfortunately gunned down by, you know, somebody by accident or because judgments and standards aren't there. And so, again, generally, I like the debate, I like the direction we're going, but the fundamental issue is, I still think that we're kind of moving away from having a standard for when the use of deadly force is justifiable, to one that says, we're kind of, when it comes to something happening in somebody's own home, we're going to close our eyes on whether or not there could have been an alternative reaction or whether or not justifiable force is okay. Or is the standard that we want to see for the use of a deadly, for the return of forced with force, deadly force being the ultimate goal, is to give you the right to do that, but we don't have a right to examine whether or not you did it, you know, because it's in your home and it's almost a presumption of innocence and guilt or innocence even without any kind of standard being applied to it. So I still continue to have those same thoughts and same struggles, but I think that the direction we're going kind of continues to narrow those opportunities for that misinterpretation. So, again, I don't disagree, I don't object to the amendment, I just wanted to kind of continue to talk and maybe just listen to myself and see if I can make sense of what I'm struggling with here with regards to the underlying and fundamental debate on this issue.
Can you check where Senator Tomada is, because he had raised his hand in one of the pages, can you please check? Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the Siniklis amendment? Senator Tomada, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm, I guess I'm just a little confused about the first part of the amendment in that the castle doctrine protection does not apply if the use of force is found to be unlawful. And I, I'm sorry, I missed the earlier speaker and if he was addressing that. But it seems to me that really the meat of this amendment would be that the castle doctrine does not save you if, if, you know, your, if the, your drug dealer on the road comes in after the drug kingpin and, and, you know, I guess that sort of activity is associated with illegal activity, then, then the use of defensive force against that individual would not apply. So maybe the author would, of the amendment can clarify what was the thinking behind the first part, "The use of force is found to be unlawful," as opposed to just simply that the castle doctrine does not apply if the use of defensive force was associated with some illegal activity. You know, the two guys were producing meth and there was an argument that broke out and so the house owner shoots the other guy because the other guy threatened him, but because they were doing it in the process of doing something illegal, then, then the castle doctrine doesn't kick in. So I'm just a little confused as to what the first half of the amendment.
Senator, do you answer the question?
Sure, Madam Speaker. The first part of the amendment is really to make sure that section three is not, does not go, does not go unaddressed with regards to the immunities. In section three, it requires that a law enforcement agency shall use standard procedures for investigating the use of force as described in subsection two, but the agency may not arrest the person for using force unless it determines that there is probable cause that the force that was used was unlawful. So if there is a situation where somebody tries to enter a home or enter a business and that person, and the homeowner uses deadly force and kills the person who was trying to enter, it still needs to be investigated by the law enforcement agency to actually determine that in fact took place. I just want to make sure that if it is found to be unlawful, it is no longer going to be immune because we kind of, it kind of escapes it, it's not, it's not definitive in the exceptions on the immunities. One might argue that it probably could be, but when we're talking about immunities, I think that I would prefer to be redundant and very, very clear, that you will not be immune from criminal prosecution or civil action if the use of force is found to be unlawful. So that's the reason why the first half of that amendment is in there, just to be absolutely clear in the law, that if in the course of the investigation is conducted in section three finds that the use of force was unlawful, there isn't some kind of legal nuance that might be found by some really skilled defense lawyer to say, well, it technically may still be immune, I want it to be very clear that it won't be. So that's why that first section is in there, Madam Speaker.
Senator Ada, was he able to answer your question? So is there anybody else who would like to speak on the Siniklis amendment? There being none then, and no objections, so ordered. On the main motion. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to rise in support of Bill 146. I really wanted to listen yesterday and I listened carefully, Madam Speaker, and I got to say that in listening also this morning on some of the media to one of our good colleagues on the floor here, I think that he summed it up when he basically said that he believes, and I still continue to believe, that every member on this floor really is and continues to be and will be committed to protecting the rights of our people and doing everything that we can to prevent our people from being victimized. Madam Speaker, I also listened to the author and was very much continuing to respect his wisdom in listening and proffering the amendments that he has and making sure the bill would be stronger and ensuring that it addressed the concerns. When I heard him talking about the fact, the unfortunate fact, that we do live, unfortunately, in much different times, I still, when I travel, Madam Speaker, to visit with family or go off island for business, I still believe, you know, when I see some of the crimes that are reported and some of the issues with crime stateside and other places, and they've made these kind of endeavors as well, Madam Speaker, I still believe, and I always love when that plane touches down, because I always love to come home, and I still believe Guam is still one of the best places on the planet, actually the best place on the planet, to raise your family, to have your children go to school here, and we still live a very, very, very good life, as far as I'm concerned, Madam Speaker. But it is changing and it's unfortunate, and I think this is a proactive piece of legislation. Madam Speaker, I personally, several times have been victimized in terms of, fortunately, I wasn't at home when my home was invaded, robbed, and that feeling when you come home and things are scattered all over the place, well, you thank God that you weren't home, maybe something worse could have happened. And I remember calling, of course, the police to come in and investigate and do what they could, and, you know, I would say, what could I do? Well, get a dog. You know, and that's, that's, that's not being funny, I mean, that's actually true. And then I started to think, you know, you watch as things happen in your neighborhood and then these signs start popping up, protected by, you know, and it is true because the police officers will tell you, you know, people that would victimize you, they would go into a neighborhood and they would cruise around the area and if they hear a dog barking, they're not going to go there. They see a sign on the window or a sign in the front yard, you know, protected by, I'm not going to go there. Well, you know, now there's law that says, you better not come here. Because my castle is a place, a sanctuary for my family, and I will do whatever it takes to safeguard the well-being of my family and my livelihood so that as long as my heart beats and I'm taking a breath, I have the right to defend what is rightly within my control, purview, and those things, and the most precious things to me, my loved ones and their future. So Madam Speaker, once again, I'd like to commend the author and all the co-authors, co-sponsors of this legislation, that really did do their due diligence, sit on this floor and work through this process to what I think is now a very, very reasonable piece of legislation that once again sends another message to the community, that when it comes to protecting our life and property, we're extremely serious about it and think twice. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for that opportunity and I sure hope that with the changes that have been made, it can garner possibly the, you know, the rest of our members to come along and hopefully support this legislation. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the motion, the main motion? Senator Ada, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their discussion and debate on 146. You know, yesterday, when we placed the bill aside, I think that we were able to garner more input in that manner and getting the consensus of the body as to how this bill should move forward. I thank my colleagues for their amendments to the bill also. The castle doctrine, Madam Speaker, doesn't take away that ability for someone to say, you know what, I'm not going to face this with, with, with force, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step back and, and not fight back with force. What this bill does is that if you do decide to use force, that you won't be prosecuted by your attacker or by their families. This bill helps protect you, it helps protect our family. If someone is to come into your home when you're not there, is one thing, take your possessions, that's fine, but when someone comes to your home when you're there, the only thing that goes through a person's mind is the intent to harm you or your family. And just like everyone with families and childrens, they will do anything to protect them. And I think that when you enter someone's property, uninvited, unwelcome, and you force your way in, that the consequences that come from that forced entry, you should not pay the price for. Our people have been victimized too many times. It's time for this, for our law to start standing on the side of our victims, and I hope that I'd be able to get the votes that's needed to pass this bill and put it into law. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Point of order, Madam Speaker?
Yes, please, I'll state your point of order.
Madam Speaker, before we move the bill to the voting, to the third reading file, can I request that we just keep it in the second reading file to give our attorneys a little more time to review it in case there's some issues with making the title now reflect the context of the bill? And then at such time, we can always come back and move it without the need for any further discussion if no further amendments are required. But I talked to the sponsor about this, asking for his consideration and just keeping it in the second reading file. There was a lot of amendments that were presented to us this afternoon, and I think in order to do due diligence, we need to give some additional time to our co-councils, our majority and minority council to review the bill.
I have no objections, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so ordered. Okay, another bill that has been suspended for a short time is Bill Number 75, and I recognize the authors, Senator Tina Rose Muny Barnes.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon. If my colleagues, Madam Speaker, I guess... If my colleagues, Madam Speaker, I guess what I need to do then is, I'm sorry, I take that back, when we left, we were with Senator Respechel, so does he? Go ahead. Okay. So, Madam Speaker, what I have here, based on what happened before lunch, is I have a bill that we substituted, it's Bill 7532, as substituted by the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs, and further substituted on the floor, and to see if my colleagues have that copy.
We all do, but we need for you then...
Right, so what I'll do, I guess, is withdraw, withdraw the previous bill, which is the one that just says, "As substituted by the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs."
Yes.
If we can do that motion first?
Yes, yes, do that now.
And then put in the version that says, "And further substituted on the floor."
So withdraw first one.
Okay.
So, her first motion is to withdraw then...
Does everybody have a copy?
Bill 75, "As substituted," just "as substituted." Are there any objections? No objections, ordered. Now, Senator, you want to make a motion now to accept?
Yes, I move to accept Bill Number 75-30, to "As substituted by the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs and Further Substituted on the Floor," be put to the third reading, and if I can briefly, briefly speak about it.
So, the first is to accept, so are there any objections? No objections, ordered. So now, a motion then to place in third reading, and you would like to discuss it with us. Wonderful, thank you, you may continue.
Madam Speaker, again, I want to thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity to further work with them and consider the concerns they had, and that being said, we've taken the bill and substituted it, further substituted it, and deleted the portions as it relates to ATMs, banks, and, and there was one more thing. And restaurants, thank you, Senator. And if I may, I have one amendment to proffer, and this would address your concern, and it would be on the last page as it relates to the enforcement and who's authorized to enforce this act of its path, and if I can, Madam Speaker, this amendment would be on page six, line six, that the chief of police is authorized to, and after the word "to" is enlist police reservists or Cape volunteers.
All right.
And delete the word recruit volunteers.
Okay.
So let me read it, it's in its entirety. Subsection B, "The Guam Police Department has the authority to enforce this act and may, in connection therewith, pursuant to section 3401.18 of Article 4, Chapter 3 of Title 16, Guam Code annotated, the chief of police is authorized to enlist police reservists or Cape volunteers to assist Guam Police Department in the enforcement of this act upon completion of training deemed necessary by the chief of police," and then delete everything after that.
Okay.
So I will give a copy to...
Yes.
They have the copy.
And upon completion of training deemed necessary by the chief of police for enforcement...
For enforcement of this act.
Okay, thank you, Senator. Does everybody have, I mean, understand the amendment?
So it gives the opportunity for the Cape volunteers to be able to enforce this act if it's passed into law.
Okay, so, all right. Senator Uggan, on the amendment?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Just to inquire with the sponsor of the measure, I understand, and I certainly support the amendment, but then if you continue the balance of that particular paragraph, it reads, "Volunteers are required to obtain a certificate from the chief of police." Already Cape volunteers are already authorized, they have the appropriate certification, that's my understanding, from the chief of police to enforce some of the handicapped, capable parking provisions out there, and then obviously the police reserve. So I don't know, Madam Speaker, if the remaining balance of that paragraph is necessary.
No, she deleted it. She deleted from volunteers down to line nine where it says relative, and then added the words "for" the enforcement of this act. Thank you, Senator, that's very good, we want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So on that amendment, no objections, so ordered, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I want to ask my colleagues, please, to help me support this measure, and I truly thank those who shared their issues and to make the necessary substitutions so that we can move forward and to prohibit the aggressive panhandling that is happening on our streets, and more importantly, we can always work on the other provisions, as I am looking at introducing new legislation afterwards. Senator Massey.
Okay, so on the motion then to send 75-32, were you stretching your arm or were you right? Okay, because you are the second sponsor, then Senator, if you don't mind, I would allow then Senator S. Nicholas to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I'm just, I'm really torn here, I, my general impression, Madam Speaker, is that our people in the community, they just don't want any roadside panhandling, you know, they just don't want any roadside panhandling. That's what my general understanding is, and, you know, once upon a time, when there wasn't such rampant roadside panhandling and it wasn't abused, I would give, until I heard a story from my child's pediatrician, who told me that one day he was driving and he saw on the side of the road somebody panhandling for a baby, they were holding a picture of a baby saying that they needed money for medical, you know, medical help for the baby. And my pediatrician told me, he rolled down his window, and he told that person, "I buried that baby last year." And it was when my pediatrician told me that story that my whole mindset on panhandling on the roadside changed, because it has gone from being a way for people to help other people to a grotesque abuse of the generosity and good-heartedness of the people of Guam. I'm a very giving person, and my heart cries when I, you know, when I hear about, you know, children that need medical help, and I'll do everything that I can to help, you know, as much as possible, especially when it comes to children, that's my softest spot. And when I heard about that, when I heard that story, that's the kind of activity that requires Castle Doctrine bills and three-strike bills, that's the kind of activity that's shifting our community away from, away from what we all grew up with, that really good, wholesome feeling. It's when we're taken advantage of, it's when our goodness is used against us that we start to change, and that kind of change, that's what makes Guam special, and for us to be changing away from that, for us to have, having to go in these directions, which are necessary at this point, but I believe that the reason why it's starting is because of that kind of abuse, the abuse of the good nature of our people. And so, you know, with this whole bill, as I really weigh it, I would much rather get all the panhandlers off of the side of the road, so that we're not forced into that situation where we second-guess, am I a bad person because I'm not giving, or we start to convince ourselves that, oh, these people are just, they're frauds, you know, I mean, it's just that constant, second-guessing, negative mindset that always, that hits all of us drivers whenever we see a panhandler on the side of the road, is it for drugs, is it really true, do they really need it? And that kind of mindset, it erodes our good nature. Of course, there's the other side of the coin, the economic side of it, the tourism side of it, where it's not good for our economy, because it doesn't make, you know, our community look good when we have panhandlers all over the place, but for me, it's the slow eating away of the good-heartedness of our people, because we don't know what's true and what's not anymore with this roadside panhandling. And I would much rather protect our good nature and take panhandlers off of the streets than to, out of good nature, try and tweak a way where we can still have them there, and always wonder, is it real, is it not real? So, I'm going to proffer an amendment to the bill, Madam Speaker. I would like to take the language on page four on line 21, section A, and have it read, "No person shall engage in panhandling on any public roadway, sidewalk, or government And take that language and stick it as a subitem B for subsection 3802 on line eight, and then strike all of section 3803 from lines 20 on page four to lines 22 on page five. And what that language will do, Madam Speaker, it'll read, "No person shall engage in panhandling on any public roadway, sidewalk, or government easement," period.
And you said that you wanted this to be a part of a...
3802.
3802, where we have an A, B, and this will become a C.
Correct.
And can we, okay, I understand, so Senators, do you understand that after, on lines 22 where it says roadway, or sidewalk, or government easement, period, therefore, from the words "except" all the way down to lines 27 on page four deleted, and then lines 1 to 22 also on page five will be deleted?
Madam Speaker, if I may?
Wait, because, yes, that's his amendment for...
That's on the amendment.
On the amendment, and yes, and then, you want to speak on the amendment?
I guess I have a point of inquiry, and maybe if I can just ask you, based on that amendment, and based on the constitutional right of any person to do freedom of speech and freedom of expression, if you can just give me one minute, so I can talk to legal counsel to see where we're going with this.
My dear, all you have to do is ask me for a moment, recess, you have to tell me whether it's constitutional or not.
One moment, thank you.
(laughter)
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, again, I look at this bill and I kind of try to go back to what we have in existing statutes and, you know, what are we trying to do? Much like what we did in the previous bill where we had existing statutes that defined justifiable response to force with force, and then we still wanted to do some more, and so we kind of changed and lax the standard that we're setting. And so I look at this again and take a look at the panhandling section and what we have in existing statute, trying to change and bifurcate against the issue of somebody asking for help versus somebody selling something, but they're doing it in the same place and at the same time. And so the question then that rises to my mind is, what are we against? We're against people asking for help in that place and that time, but we're not against people selling things at that same place and that same time. And why don't we want to allow one activity at that place and that time and allow activity, another activity at that place and that time? When we look at panhandling and see where it comes from and why we put legislation, the basis of it was public safety, you know? And that's what the cops always tell us when I'm out there waving on the street and I kind of try to stand in the middle of the road and he said, you know, "You can go over to the sidewalk and wave, but you can't wave it from the middle of the street or the middle median because we're concerned about your safety." So if we're going to say you can't ask for help in the sidewalk because we're concerned about your safety, but you can have somebody go out there and wave, you know, whatever he wants to sell in front of you, and so are we now going to get these people that are asking for help, are they all going to give you a red ribbon and say, "Can I have a dollar for it?" And is that going to be okay? Would now, if I give you a red ribbon or a flower, you know, to make your day brighter, but in exchange I'm asking you for money, is that okay? Because now it's a commercial activity or whatever, and we're allowing commercial activity to occur. Is it safety that we're trying? Are we concerned about the safety of the individuals conducting the activity? Or we just don't want, you know, to look people in the eye and say, "I don't want to give you any money today," or, you know, "Because for whatever reason, I don't want to do it," you know? Are we trying to erase opportunities for us to feel guilty for not helping our fellow man? Or are we really concerned about safety? And if we are, then we should be just as concerned about the safety of the person selling that product as we are about the person asking for help? I don't know. I think if the fundamental regulation is based on safety, then it should be safe for everyone. I think that may be where Senator Siniklas was coming from, you know, in his previous amendment that he withdrew, is that if we are concerned about providing safe, you know, highways and travel ways in our community and activity that impedes that safety, whether you're asking for help or whether you're selling something, you're still impeding safety and therefore that activity should be curtailed. But in this case, all we want to do is not allow people to ask for help in that place because we kind of feel guilty going home, you know, maybe. And I agree with the observations made about how they do it. It's like the debate that we've had and the exchange of emails that we all get in our mailboxes on other issues before this body, you know? One person wrote me a very nice letter completely opposite of my position over all the years and one of the issues that we'll be addressing, but the way she did it, how she approached it, I could, I sat there and read and reread her position paper on the matter because of just the way she handled it. Whereas, you know, some people, I don't even open that email, already know what he's going to do, you know? And so, again, we go back to what is the government's interest in allowing one type of activity to occur at that same place and that same moment and saying the other one can at that same place and that same moment, but you can't have one, but you can have the other. And so that's, that to me is the question that I have with regards to how this bill is structured and what we're trying to do. So I would say, you know, I kind of tend to want to go back and just, once again, maybe make the amendment and just vote it, understanding what the issues are and what the fundamental purpose of the panhandling bill is that we've passed over the years. And just put down on page three, line three, rather than the immediate donation of money, just put immediate exchange of money. So that you just can't go out there and exchange money for anything, you know, in those, in the areas where we don't want people to be there for the purpose of exchanging money. So I would maybe just attempt to present, or would just make that change and see whether this body then can ask itself, and each of the individual senators can ask themselves, you know, "Why do I want to not allow, you know, somebody to ask for help and have people give help, but we want to allow people to, for commercial purposes, allow them access to that same place, conducting the same activity of exchanging money?" So that would be my question to the individual members as they contemplate and think about the amendment that I'm proposing, which is just to change immediate donation to the immediate exchange of money on line 26, page three.
Madam Speaker, if I may, based on the amendment as proffered by the good Senator from Baragada, would that then take away the provisions of not being able to engage after they follow the precautions and ask, and go through the permit process for everything?
Can you please make sure, though, that you're asking the question of the mover of the amendment, that he's listening, because I know he's, three people are talking to him at the same time. Speaker Panglinen, do you hear to the question?
The question is, if this gets passed, would that then automatically take away from the section 3803 as it engage on how someone can go out and do this stuff? Does it still allow if someone?
No, I don't think so.
So, Madam Speaker, if I may, if that amendment goes through based on the section 3803, if all those rules of engagement are still allowed, all these rules are followed and go through, can the person going through and wanting to, I guess, pay or to go ahead and sell something, can that still happen if all the items are followed?
Senator, do you hear to the question? So the answer, please answer to the chair, so that then I can have it recorded.
Your newspapers are now one dollar.
So then the answer is?
My answer to your question.
Yes, thank you, Senator.
Which doesn't make it necessarily so, but that my answer and intent is, it still allows those activities provided they follow up, because those are the exceptions to it.
Okay, so on the amendment, Senator Siniklas, you're recognized.
You know, on the amendment, if we're going to be including the, or expanding the definition of panhandling to just the exchange of money, not just the donation of money, then I believe that what we will be doing is we will be broadly affecting all roadside activities. And, you know, one of the concerns that I have is, a lot of this stuff is already codified. You know, I spoke earlier about how we have an enforcement issue, and a lot of this stuff is already in the laws, and we're obviously not getting the kind of enforcement that we need to be getting in order to make sure that these provisions are being followed. And what concerns me is if these are, if we already have a lot of these things in the books and the enforcement is not there, then maybe we need to take them out entirely and just stop all the roadside sidewalk and easement panhandling, whether it's the exchange of money or whether it's the donation of money. Because obviously if these things are already in the law to some extent and we still have this growing problem that we have, then I think that we need to revisit that. So I don't have any objection to the amendment, Madam Speaker, but I think that if we're going to be broadening the definition of panhandling that way, I can support it, and if you would indulge me, I may actually want to go back and, since we've broadened the definition of panhandling to include all those forms of activity, I may be, and in light of the findings that a lot of these things are already on the books and the laws and there's just no enforcement, I would like perhaps the opportunity to go back and revisit my amendment. But with respect to this particular amendment, I think that broadening it wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. So on the amendment, anybody else? No objections to the amendment? So order. Speaker Panglinen, you still have the floor? You're done then. Okay, so anybody else would like to speak on the motion? Well, no, Senator Siniklas did ask if I could come back to him depending on the result of the previous action. So Senator, you're recognized. Are you still thinking?
May I have a one-minute recess, Madam Speaker? Do you confer legal counsel?
Sure.
Madam Speaker, I believe that this issue, that as it concerns, what I have in mind is going to require more research, and so I would like to, I'm satisfied and we can go ahead and move forward. My apologies to the body.
Okay. I normally wouldn't be able to do this, but I just wanted to ask you, Senator Siniklas, because of the amendment that you put in, which is org government easement, if you look up to D. on that same page where it says a public place and it lists a whole bunch of others, government easement is not there. And whether you want to make that consistent or not? D. definition?
On page four.
Because you've got roadway and sidewalk, but then of course, I don't know.
I'm okay, Madam Speaker, because on page four, line 10, section A, it says, "No person shall engage in panhandling in an aggressive manner in any public place."
Okay, any public roadway or sidewalk or government easement, so that you just want to keep that there and not include it in the definition as well?
Actually, thank you, Madam Speaker, for your sharp eye. Let's go ahead and I'd like to make an amendment to include that within the definition of public place.
Okay, so, and then legal counsel determine one of the places there to put the word government easement. So on that amendment, objections, order. Okay, so on the motion then to send, finally, Bill 7532, further substituted on the floor without any objection, so order. Thank you. Yes, tell me. Senator Respechio, Bill number 91-32.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 91 in the third reading file, and it's an act to earmark all tax revenue derived from the operation of any new acute care hospital facility and to appropriate such earmarked revenue to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority to supplement pharmaceutical and related supplies.
And you're going to briefly discuss it?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I just want to rise to ask support from all of our colleagues, to particularly thank the appropriations chairman for reporting the bill out and voting yes on the committee report, as well as our oversight chair of health for their work to bring this bill through the legislative process. I saw fit to introduce this bill with Senator Tom Adam, recognizing that we will soon see a new hospital, and any activity from that new hospital will certainly generate new taxes and taxes that are not even spoken for yet in our general revenue. And so what this bill does is it takes all of those taxes and automatically appropriates it to GMH and specifically appropriates it to supplement the pharmaceutical and related supplies. And so I ask all of our colleagues to support this very important piece of legislation.
On the motion for Bill 91, is there anyone who would like to speak? Now, Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the legislation and kind of reiterate, of course, the positions and the policies that this legislature has done in support of Guam's only public hospital. I know we face many times when GMH fails, for whatever reason, to meet its obligation to its vendors, to its employees, to the retirement fund, to anyone, that when they fail, it's our fault. And we struggle with trying to sometimes defend ourselves, but I think what this body has done under this leadership and the Democratic-controlled majority is, rather than defend ourselves, we just move forward and provide GMH with the additional revenues needed in order to give it the best opportunity to succeed. We cannot guarantee that they're going to succeed, no matter how much money we give them, but we can certainly make the odds better that they will succeed and therefore able to provide the quality of care and the operational ability to meet its obligations, not the first, not only to first, of course, the patients and people who walk into that door, seeking critical and, as well as regular medical attention, but to those people in our community who provide goods and services to the Guam Memorial Hospital, so that the revenues are there to support meeting our obligations to them, so they can meet obligations to their employees and to their suppliers. And so if I was to list the efforts of this body on what we have done in order to ensure and give that great opportunity, or the greatest opportunity we can, given the resources that we have, I would say that we have always made sure that if they are not, the first thing that comes to mind when we pass a budget, that they are at the minimum the second and never less than the third when we provide the resources and allocate the resources during our annual government budget process. From increasing the pharmaceutical funds, to putting together the Guam Cancer Trust Fund, and raising the revenues there to make sure that GMH receives those revenues, and all of the other initiatives, from establishing new taxes on gaming activities on Guam, while we may not agree with how that's being done, we agree that the money will help GMH, and we've moved forward on that issue just as well. So, again, Madam Speaker, I rise not so much, as I say, to defend ourselves, but to let the people of Guam know that this body continues, in every single session and in every single term, to provide and give the economic resources and the financial resources to the Guam Memorial Hospital to meet its challenges. And the challenges are going to increase, you know, tenfold if not fivefold in the next couple of years with the construction, the finishing, and of course, the opening of a new acute care facility on Guam. That GMH's resources will diminish, without a doubt, not through any fault of this body. The only fault that this government can, or the only action that this government can take to negatively affect GMH is if we were to say to that new acute care facility, "We're not going to tax you at all. We're going to, you know, we're going to let you operate without any taxes, put a non-level playing field within the medical service industry here on Guam," and then not have any money for GMH. But our solution has always been, we're not raising taxes, we're taking the resources, reallocating them and prioritizing them to put GMH in a position where it can compete and it will be able to respond with the additional revenues and resources identified by this body and the members of this different body who are primary movers of those initiatives, such as what we have here with regards to Bill 91, to give to GMH and allow them the opportunity to meet the challenges head-on. And their challenges, once again, as I say, are going to multiply and increase tenfold within the next couple of years, and this certainly will go a long ways towards providing opportunity for GMH to meet those challenges. Thank you very much, and this is Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Speaker Panglinen, on the motion, recognize Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill 91-32 as well. I'd like to commend the authors for moving this legislation forward. I'd also like to echo the sentiments of the previous speaker, our good colleague from Baragada, and also acknowledge the work that this body has been doing to assist our only civilian hospital. Very recently, with the passage of our annual budget, I want to commend you, Madam Speaker, for your initiative to ensure that resources are directed to the hospital. You see, you know, your initiative to ensure that funds that are issued to the government are directed there, and so we're doing all we can, and the previous speaker is right. We're giving them the tools and the resources necessary because we know that it's a challenge. It's a challenging, it's a fact that the hospital must, our hospital must continue to accept patients regardless of their ability to pay. And for any business, you know, that's a losing proposition. And so, you know, this legislation is timing, it's a good time. You know, sometimes we catch ourselves coming in here, being dragged in here at times, to find a solution right away to an immediate problem. You know, it's the hot news of the week or hot news of the day, but you see with these measures, with this measure, is that we're forward-thinking, you know, knowing that the new hospital, which we're also very grateful for them being, for coming here and expanding our delivery of healthcare services, we know that the revenues that they would be collecting, tax revenues, you know, employment revenues, those are the revenues that this legislation is going to be directing to our hospital. And so, you know, it's something that we should all stand behind and support. And again, I want to thank the authors and ask my colleagues to please support this measure. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Ogun, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I too would like to stand in support of this particular measure and commend the sponsors certainly for moving forward and trying to identify some additional funding sources to be allocated directed to GMH. If we recall very distinctly, one of the, perhaps, sticking point with the recent conclusion of our budget for fiscal year '14 was, how were we going to resolve the issue with regards to GMH's funding requirements? And it certainly took us a little time to be able to come up with the final solution that was amenable to the governor, but it's reflective of the commitment that members of this body continue to have on an annual basis when it deals directly with budgetary issues and concerns. And you know, Madam Speaker, just reflecting back many, many times, not only did this body in previous legislatures identify or authorize the borrowing of $27 million for GMH to be able to address some of the operational requirements, a few terms after that, the legislature came in and paid off that $27 million loan that GMH had acquired through some of the bond proceeds. Also practically every single bond borrowing that this Also practically every single bond borrowing that this government, through the General Fund, has been able to acquire, allocated some portion of those financial resources to GMH. As a matter of fact, the $11 million that is being expended right now that should be concluded on the project that should be concluded very shortly, on the expansion of the emergency room, as well as the expansion of the ICU, the intensive care unit, are origin, the funds originated from one of the bonds that were floated on behalf of the government of Guam and the people of Guam. Then we also have other actions that this body has taken, not only the flexibility that was incorporated into the fiscal year 14 budget that gave the chief executive practically carte blanche authority, up to $36 million during the course of the fiscal year, to take and move around within the executive branch budget and allocate it directly to GMH. These are all examples of when, in fact, members of this body have made decisions to be able to provide life-saving support financially to our one and only public hospital facility so that they can provide the best services or the quality of life services, life-saving services to our people. And Madam Speaker, this is another proposal again, originating from an individual who saw that there are going to be additional revenues that will be collected on behalf of the government of Guam once the new medical facility opens up. And based on that, because that's not part of the ongoing collection of tax revenues, based on that new hospital being open, why don't we take some of the tax revenues that are originating from that hospital and allocate it directly towards the operations of GMH? And I certainly appreciate the perspective of the previous speaker, Madam Speaker, when he shared with us that perhaps this would address some of the funding requirements of GMH, but I also believe that there are, there will be bigger challenges down the road. Because when that new hospital opens, then obviously, a lot of it would be dependent in terms of GMH's survivability on making sure that all of the collections or the revenues are collected to the greatest extent possible for services that are provided to our people. So, Madam Speaker, I wanted to highlight that because here is, like I said again, another measure that would identify additional funding sources that can be allocated directly to GMH so that they can take care of their operations, so that the doctors and the nurses and the administrators and the staff can concentrate on not only providing a clean hospital, but providing possibly the best medical care that they can provide based on the resources that are given to it by this government and on behalf of the people of Guam. So, Madam Speaker, consistent with that, I'd like to proffer an amendment to this particular legislation. I did inquire with the sponsor if he would consider it because if you take a look at, on page three, line 11, "The intent of the legislation is to allocate the resources to pharmaceutical and related supplies." And I'd like to, I do not have ample time, Madam Speaker, but I can read it. And yes, I will provide you a written copy and a clerk of written copy if you allow me to be able to proceed with presenting this. But in order to make sure that there's proper accountability, rather than it going directly to GMH to their so-called General Fund, I think it would be proper, because of the intent of the sponsor in this legislation, to ensure that it goes in the direction of getting medical supplies as well as pharmaceutical supplies that we deposited it directly into that particular account, which is established and existing today. And Madam Speaker, I'd like to propose an amendment that would read, "Right after supplies on line 11, such funds shall be deposited into the GMHA Pharmaceutical Funds, comma, and thereby expended in accordance with the provisions applicable therein." So it would read in that fashion. And to our colleagues, if you recall, the GMHA Pharmaceutical Fund is, can be found in Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, subsection 26208. It's an existing account, fund that is specifically geared towards providing GMH's flexibility and some of the resources that this body has already identified, has gone into that particular fund for that expenditure that I highlighted earlier. So, Madam Speaker, the amendment would read again, "After supplies on line 11, page three, such funds shall be deposited into the GMHA Pharmaceutical Funds, comma, and thereby expended in accordance with the provisions applicable therein."
On the, okay, is everyone able to follow along with the amendment without having to make copies right now for everyone? So are there any, anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? No objections, then, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Please provide a copy then to the clerk. Is there anybody who would like to speak on the main motion? Senator Munia Barnes?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand and rise in full support of this Bill 91. And if I may, just inquire with the author of the legislation that we talk about taking the tax and other revenues collected from the hospital to go into GMH, and there's no specification of what revenues would it be, taxes on employment? I know that on section two, it talks about the estimate acute healthcare revenues, but would this also, and it doesn't say anything here about whether it include employment or services or equipment or anything that if the hospital charges for anything, would GRTs be applied to those items being sold or is it just for the revenues coming from acute care?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yeah, I do, Madam Speaker, and I thank our colleague for that question. It'll actually be everything that the, that the activity of the new hospital will generate that would require them to pay taxes, that the Department of Revenue and Taxation Director shall estimate what their taxes are, and then those monies will automatically go to the pharmaceutical fund.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank the good senator for sharing his answer. And I just want to say, for the record, I stand in support of this measure. Senator Massey.
You're welcome. Senator Siniklas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this bill. I think it's a really good thing for us to be constantly looking for ways to get financial support to our hospital. What still bothers me to this day, Madam Speaker, however, is we don't exactly know the magnitude of the problem. We've asked management, I've asked management over and over again on six different occasions to not only tell us what the, what the full scope of the problem is currently, but what they project the problem to be when the new hospital opens. And without us fully understanding what the projected impact is going to be to the hospital when that new hospital opens, we're shooting in the dark. We are dumping money into a situation without fully understanding what that situation is going to require. And what bothers me about management's inability, unwillingness, I don't know what it is, failure to provide us with the projected impact of what the new hospital is going to do to the revenues of GMH, that failure is really limiting our ability to get a firm handle on what the true financial situation is projected to be. And absent unawareness of that, we don't quite know what steps we need to start taking now. You know, what other things do we need to start exploring? How serious do we need to get about generating additional revenue sources? We have some already. Maybe we need to increase the taxes on those. Maybe we need to increase the taxes on new acute care facilities. I don't know. We don't know what the magnitude of the problem is. And until we get an understanding of that, we really don't know how to fully address the question of sustaining our hospital. So I rise in support of this bill, but Madam Speaker, I must, I must state for the record that we've been, over the last two, three months, jumping through hoops to dump millions and millions and millions of dollars into the hospital. We're going to be dumping money that hasn't even started coming in yet into the hospital, and we still cannot get from management what the magnitude of the problem is projected to be. And as a policymaker, I agree that we need to support our hospital. I agree that they need money, but I just, I have a real hard time constantly dumping money into a black hole and the management is not doing the job of telling us exactly how deep it is. And I wanted to get that on the record so that management can understand that I'm dead serious about this. And just as these bills can get passed, they can also get repealed. Because if management is not going to give us a full appraisal of what the problem is, they're going to start really running into headwinds of at least this policymaker, continuing to just pour money into a situation that we don't fully understand. And they need to help us understand that. And they need to understand that as well because they need to be planning for it, too. I'm just baffled as to why we're not, we're not receiving that information. I'm baffled as to why that projection isn't, isn't being prioritized. And I think that we need to have that expectation clearly expressed to management while we do our part here as policymakers to get more money to the hospital. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? There being none, Senator Especho. Okay, so on the motion to send then, 91-32, the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Especho on Bill 94-32. I'm sorry?
Madam Speaker, can we just set that aside?
Set it aside, okay. Senator Rodriguez on 98-32.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 98, the third reading, and be allowed to briefly discuss it.
And it's as introduced?
As substituted.
Oh, substituted.
By the committee.
Let me see. Okay, yes, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 98 is enacted to mandate the establishment of Guam Immunization Registry and to provide for the coordinated submission of other statistical data for compilation and reporting by the Office of Vitals Statistics. Currently, the department, Madam Speaker, is working under a process not supported by law whereby voluntary sign consent of a patient or the patient's guardian is required to allow the physician or healthcare provider to report any vaccination information. This opt-in system creates an administrative burden for healthcare providers by mandating the submission of immunization information and changing the process of obtaining records to an opt-out process. There will no longer be a need to obtain the signed consent of the patient or the patient's parent or guardian in order to be entered into a registry. The bill would establish and maintain a single island-wide repository of immunization records to be known as the Guam Immunization Information System. The information to be compiled will allow the department to assess immunization status and identify any areas of concern or deficiency that need to be addressed. An efficient mandatory process will also ensure the accuracy of the data collected. The other part of this legislation, Madam Speaker, is the compilation and reporting of a partial birth, abortion, or abortion, which is currently the responsibility of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. The hospital right now does not, however, perform, they don't perform abortions there, but the responsibility is unnecessarily placed on them and is unnecessary burden upon the hospital. The responsibility of data collection and compilation will be better coordinated if the responsibility is transferred to the Office of Vitals Statistics under Public Health. Bill 98 also provides adequate time for the Office of Vitals Statistics to develop and prepare guidelines, forms, other requisite documentation and procedures required for implementation of the mandatory reporting provisions. I know, Madam Speaker, during the public hearing, there was concern by Public Health that moving this to the Office of Vitals Statistics would cause them, you know, additional work and that they're short of manpower. However, this body, last term, created a special fund for the Office of Vitals Statistics that allowed them to be able to beef up their, their equipment, to get updated computer and update their systems there, and to also bring in, to bring in personnel as needed. And so as we try to look and see how we can be a better government, to operate more efficiently, we looked at what the hospital is doing and how this, this reporting is, this burden is placed on them, and we look at what this report really entails. And so it's better served if we have it transferred over to the Office of Vitals Statistics. So that's what the second portion of this bill is, but it's really pretty simple and basic legislation. So I ask my colleagues to please support it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, vice speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm just waiting to get back on the line. Thank you very much. I was listening to the, the senator from Dedodo, Talakoko, earlier, talking about how we've been trying to get the hospital to speak up about what they need and how, what the depth of the problem is at the hospital. And I'm still trying to get back on the, on the hospital website. I went to look at job opportunities at the hospital because when I was up at, I ran into someone who had made a bid on the collection agency, and the RFP still has not been awarded. And it's been like two and a half years now since they've not had a collection agency. And as far as vacancies at the hospital, in the non-professionals, there are nine vacancies. We'll discount one of the attorneys, we'll just, and environmental services technician. They are vacant. Medical records coder, which is the most important part of the billing, they have a job announcement for that. Assistant Chief Financial Officer is vacant. The person in charge of RFPs and IFBs, the hospital materials management administrator is vacant. The biomedical electronic superintendent is vacant. The medical health records administrator is vacant, and the patient services representative who does the part of the collections and a collection agent. Except for attorney and hospital environmental services worker, seven of the nine vacancies that the hospital is currently announcing is for the purpose of trying to collect. That's the reason why they are in that deep hole that they are and keep asking us to try to dig them out of.
On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak? There being none. No, the author to close, of course. Okay, Senator Especho, would you like to close?
Just send it down then?
Okay, Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, I'm sorry. Okay, so on the motion then to send 98-32 down to the third reading file without objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Senator, oh, she's not here, okay. Senator Tom Adam, Bill number 12.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to set that bill aside.
Okay. Senator Mike Siniklas on 116?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to place Bill number 116 on the third reading file and have the opportunity to speak on Bill 116.
Okay, and is it, let me see, is it as introduced or?
As amended by the committee on Guam US Military Relocation, Homeland Security, Veterans Affairs, and the judiciary.
Got it, thank you. And you'd like to speak on it? So you may proceed.
Very briefly, Madam Speaker, what Very briefly, Madam Speaker, what this bill intends to do is require that agencies create operational continuity plans within their respective agencies, so that in the event that something were to happen that would impede the, the flow of operations, they would be able to have these contingency plans in place, so they can know what to do. Having come from the private sector, Madam Speaker, it's not uncommon for business continuity plans to be in place. Definitely in the banking industry, it's actually a mandate that they have a business continuity plan. And this is more of a government version that we're, that we're proposing here, so that agencies, every single agency, and instrumentality of the government of Guam will take a look at their operations, and they'll be able to assess whether or not there's going to be any kind of major service disruptions in the event of certain things happening. And we list some of those events here. One of them is that they need to evaluate whether or not the loss of personnel by retirement or by deployment, whether in the guard or the reserve, or due to sickness, or even due to their passing away. They need to assess whether or not the loss of personnel is going to be something that's going to impede the, that particular operation. If that particular employee were to leave, how exactly they're going to be able to continue, continue operating that particular function of the government. It also covers the loss or malfunction or breakdown of equipment necessary for the efficient provision of services. This is in particular put together because of what's happened up at the Department of Revenue and Taxation with respect to the scanning device that they had up there that was responsible for going through the, the GRTs and sticking it into the system. It broke two years ago. GRT reconciliations have been piling up, and the machine, you know, the machine breakdown was, was what caused the, the work to, to actually pile up and the reconciliations to not happen in a timely fashion. If the contingency plan was in place as to how the operation was going to continue, in spite of the, the machine, we wouldn't be having as much of a problem with keeping track of, of real-time collection and information of Rev and Tax. It also includes the loss of physical or electronic records for the necessary provision of efficient services. And this is very important, Madam Speaker. If, if there's a fire, you know, what are, how are we going to be able to pull up those records to be able to continue operating? Some of these things are, are very concerning. And in the banking industry, you know, it, it's fairly obvious how, you know, we need to make sure there's redundancy in record-keeping for, for banks and accounts, but there are a lot of very critical pieces of information that this government depends on and that our people depend on, and we need to make sure that we have a operational continuity plan in place in the event that those records were to be lost. It also includes the unavailability of, of a facility which is necessary for the efficient provision of services, and any combination of the above. And it requires that these operational continuity plans be maintained and reviewed, and also kept with the Office of Civil Defense. Just in the event that there were something, that if something were to happen to an agency that would cause its own filing of its operational continuity plan to be compromised, they can go and retrieve a copy from the Office of Civil Defense. So, I, I intend, I hope that my colleagues can get behind this bill. I think it'd be a very, very good thing for our government to get proactive and to have these operational continuity plans in place as part of the normal course of doing business in our government. You know, if we have administration changes, if we have director changes, if we have management changes, you know, we can have institutional knowledge wiped, wiped out overnight. And sometimes that institutional knowledge is critical to being able to understand, okay, if this happens to that, then this is where we go for that, you know? So, these plans will allow for us to, to have an actual document to go back to, to reference, even in the event that management were to change. So, I hope that my colleagues can get behind it and support it, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak on it, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Vice Speaker?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this piece of legislation. It, it really is a long time coming. Just yesterday, you received a note from BBMR stating that the revenue report could not be provided. If memory serves me right, that means we've not received reports for September, August, July, June, and May. And so, I was just back in my office instructing my staff that next Thursday at five-thirty, I will be conducting an oversight hearing since BBMR and BIT, I mean, not BBMR, but Department of Administration and BIT are under my jurisdiction, I will be conducting an oversight hearing to find out what they're doing to try to get this back up. And I'm going to be sending a letter to the Oversight Chairs of BBMR and Rev and Tax to find out if whether or not they would join in getting those departments down here for an oversight to try to figure out what, what, what the status and state of the government revenue is. I, I was just meeting with the public auditor, she was in my office for an appointment this afternoon, and I was trying to figure out how we were going to close out the year when, when we've not had a report for five months of what the state of our revenue is. And we receive this, these, these letters every month, and it just has made me crazy. And so, I, I am going to be calling the two agencies that are under my purview and hoping that the other two chairs will join me in getting their people in here to try to figure out why we can't get this document to us, so that we know what the state of our government is. Thank you. But this piece of legislation is imperative to make sure that there is some kind of backup plan or alternative way of being able to handle these things in the event a system goes down or, or people leave government. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too would like to stand in support of Bill number one-one-six, S. Three-Two, and commend the sponsor for being forward-thinking, forward-looking. You know, when this legislation was initially introduced and then we had the public hearing, one of the general questions was posed to, or a question was posed to a few of the directors that just, just so happened to be at the oversight hearing or the public hearing. And some of them look kind of surprised. What exactly is a continuity plan? And that is what is highlighted here in terms of what every single agency in the government of Guam should have, should there be not only any change in administrators, change in directors, but really for the sake of all of the members or all of the employees and the management of that organization, so that they can understand, should this happen, how are we going to address it? Should this particular operational equipment break down, how are we going to be able to continue to provide the services to our community? And I bring this up because the, I believe, the camera for providing firearms ID has been down for more than a year. More than a year, Madam Speaker. And I was approached not too long ago by, obviously, an individual who had to go register for firearms ID. And the process right now is that they are given an eight-and-a-half by eleven certification or copy of their firearms ID without any photo, and it's only extended for ninety days. So the process requires that, in fact, they all come in every ninety days, everyone who has a firearms ID, just in case they're able to procure a brand-new camera, or just in case they were able to repair the existing camera. Now, is that how we want to run and operate our government? One of the suggestions that was proffered to an administrator of that particular program, incidentally, the administrator there now is a, is a different individual, because the previous administrator, I understand, had either left the department on a retirement basis or had been reassigned. But, Madam Speaker, the individual I was speaking to had made a recommendation, why do you have to put in every ninety days that they come in and renew the firearms ID? Why don't you allow for it to expire on the regular timeline, and then when notification is given to the public that they have to bring in their firearms ID once the camera's repaired, then by all means, they'll do that? Well, here is a, a situation where perhaps a continuity plan would have been very helpful. Because another suggestion that was provided by that individual to the previous administrator of that section was, is there any way that you can coordinate efforts between the Guam Police Department and also the Department of Revenue and Taxation with their ID section, and see if, in fact, they can perhaps, one day out of the week, use their machine, their camera, so that at least the firearms ID would reflect not only the regular ID, but also the photo of the individual that's being given that firearms ID? You know, those are, are very simple fixes, at least from my perspective, looking at it and looking at the importance of a firearms ID and making sure that the proper individual has that identification for a simple fix. It's incorporating the resources and the assets of the government and making sure that something can be done. I understand now they're procuring, in the process of procuring a brand-new camera, Madam Speaker, and repairing the existing one. How long that takes is a different story. But that is almost in line with a continuity plan for each of the government of Guam agencies that would reflect their basic services, and should something happen in certain situations that they always have a way to resolve it so that they can continue to provide the services that they provide the community of Guam. So I stand in full support of this legislation, Madam Speaker, and I commend the sponsor for being forward-looking and ensuring that at least we begin moving in the direction of having agencies plan for the future. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? Speaker Pangolinian, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this piece of legislation. You know, in another piece of legislation, and I think it was on breastfeeding, you know, it's just common sense, right, for accommodation of mothers who are, need to express milk to feed their babies. It's all, it's good health practices, good economic program because of the reduction in healthcare costs associated with the positive effects of breastfeeding. And the question I asked was, you know, do we need to legislate common sense? And yes, sometimes we do. And this is one of those cases where it would be common sense. It would be common sense, it would be good operational practice, it's, it'll be, you know, good planning, it would be best practices, but it doesn't happen. And so, in that view, when common sense cannot rise to the top, then we have to raise it up ourselves by making it then common policy. And so, what this bill does is it requires these departments and agencies to look ahead, to plan, to run what-if scenarios. You know, one of the most active agencies that I see all the time that, that kind of comes to our mind because, you know, we get bombarded with the press releases, is the Office of Homeland Security. They're always having tabletop practices, they're always having, you know, the great shakeup and all this. What, what do you do when this happens? What do you do if this happens? You know? And then they try to inform the general public on the safety precautions they must take when any of these events do occur. But we don't get that with our government agencies. We don't get what happens when a person who needs a copy of a health certificate, of a birth certificate, because they're going off to war or the war theater front, and they need that for the purpose of making someone eligible for benefits while they're being, while they are deployed? What, what happens when the computers breaks down or, or, you know, and so forth? So how do you then take that information out of there, and, and what's the backdoor way of providing service to the people who need that service? And so, what this bill does is it focuses then the senior management of the departments and agencies to focus, because it's all there. The information, in most instances, is there. It just has to be compiled so that the information can be accessed by other individuals who weren't there when the information was presented. You know, one of the things that you find in the government of Guam that I get amazed at is when you walk in there and you see that face, that person can generally tell you where, when, and how the information you're seeking was presented to their department. But when he's gone, nobody else can, can find it. And we can't rely on that person coming back, because what happens if he doesn't, as we have seen happen? And so, this provides then those what-if scenarios that puts the knowledge and institutional knowledge in a place that can be accessed by everyone, so that everyone can access that knowledge and enhance the ability of this government of Guam to provide, continue to providing service when its traditional, its current system of delivery of that service gets disrupted. And I think that that is something that our citizens deserve and our people deserve, and I think that it's about time, because of the lack of failure to do this, just because we want to do a better job, you know, doesn't get done, then we need to mandate that it shall get done. And I think that that will be a good thing for the community, as well as for all of the employees within all of the departments and agencies who work hard and strive every day to provide the people of Guam with the, with the service from the government that they deserve. Thank you, and since this, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. On the motion, is there anybody else? Then, Senator, you want to close? Senator S. Nicholas?
Just a quick amendment, Madam Speaker. I'd like to add Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, Senator Frank Uggan, and Speaker Ben Pangolinian as co-sponsors on the bill, and I'm comfortable moving it on.
On that amendment, without any objections, and so ordered. So on the motion, then, to send one-sixteen to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senators, I, looking at the time, think we're going to recess until tomorrow morning at nine AM, okay?